We're on track.
Now, it's still 30 seconds off.
I'll be at the ready. Good evening. My call is Tuesday, August 16th, meeting of Middletown City Council to order. If you please stand and join me in a moment meditation and the pledge leads to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston, here. Mr. Bohannon?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Picard?
Here.
Mayor Mulligan?
Here.
All right, I've received notice and comment cards, so we can go right to city manager reports, Mr. Atkins.
Good evening, city, good evening, mayor and council. We've got four items tonight. I'd like to start with our friends from SELF who are here tonight, John Post and the Americor National Civilian Community Corps. I know they've been work, this is actually a Hamilton year for group work camps, but they did, I think, seven or eight houses during that time as well. And have a group here tonight doing further work in Middletown, so I'll let John take over from here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Post.
Good evening, mayor, council members. It's a great pleasure to be here again. I look forward to my yearly visit to let you know what's going on and I thought I'd take just a few moments to tell you about what's happening itself and then and with our neighbors who care, home repair program, and then I'll turn it over to our N, our Americor NCCC team who are currently here doing home repairs in Middletown and in other parts of the county. Excuse me. As you know, we started the program about six and a half years ago, our home repair portion of it, with a handful of homes up in Hamilton, the city of Hamilton, and it's grown since then. We're now doing over 100 homes a year. We're doing more complex stuff. The work we do is mainly aimed at building code violations, looking at mobility type issues, wheelchair ramps. We did 18 of them so far this year, 18 wheelchair ramps. We do steps, handrails, all kinds of different things, anything that can help our elderly and disabled homeowners stay in their homes. And we really enjoy working with Doug and Kyle and that whole group. They've been very good about when they run into a homeowner that can't get the work done by themselves, they generally call us and we try and intervene where we can. A lot of the homes are just too far gone and we can't get them all, but we do the best we can. And we couldn't do it without our volunteers. Right now, the program has evolved into, even though we had the camp in Hamilton this year, it's evolved into a countywide program, year-round program. And our goal is to do 30 to 40 homes in Middletown, 30 to 40 homes in Hamilton, and 30 to 40 homes in the rest of the county every year, not just whatever. So like like Mr. Atkins was saying, this year we had the camp at Garfield Middle School, but we were all over the county and seven or eight houses here, including one house we had 18 kids on. Transform that pretty dramatically. The, this year's highlights for Middletown included 80 volunteers. We had from Braille Boulevard Church of God in March that worked in homes here in, strictly in Hamilton. On September 23rd, we're going to have 30 to 60, we're not quite sure of the count yet, of employees from AK Steel who are getting the day off to go out and work in the community. My hat's off to them and the help we've gotten. We had two major camps this year, one in June where we had over 600 volunteers, mainly from the Vineyards Church, and about half of them worked in Middletown and the other half worked in the rest of the county. And then our big camp this year was, like I said, in July where we had over 600, 450 volunteers, biggest camp we ever had, from out of state, and then another 150 local volunteers, so another 600 volunteers. And about a fourth to a third of them were actually in the city of Middletown. In total last year, to give you an idea, and Doug remembers the first years when we were scrambling trying to find volunteers. Last year, we had 1,400 volunteers give us over 21,000 hours of service time. So 1,400 volunteers give us 21,000 hours worth of service time. And this year, we're going to beat that because we'll have that, we'll have that matched by the end of the month. So it's just, it's a, it's a service and we love doing it and we love working with you all as we can do it. I'm going to let the Americor team, I'm going to introduce you to them, let them speak for themselves. We'll start with Annalise Cowan, who is the team leader, and she's got some pictures of some of the houses they worked on.
Do you mind if we just stand up here?
Sure. If you use a microphone, they can get you better on the, on the sound system, so whoever's presenting, so.
So hi, I'm Annalise Cowan. I'm the team leader for Maple Seven. We're going to go down the line and we're going to introduce ourselves and where we're from. I'm from Portland, Oregon.
I'm Angelique Capito and I'm from East Islip, New York.
I'm Jamie Caldonato and I'm from a suburb outside of Philadelphia.
My name is Sam LaFrance and I'm from Fresno, California.
I'm Jacob Encardena. I'm from North Fort Myers, Florida.
Hi, I'm Leah. I'm from Pittsburgh.
I'm Miguel Acevedo from Philadelphia.
So we wanted to tell you guys a little bit about our team and the program a little bit. National Civilian Community Corps, or NCCC, is a branch of Americor. It's a national service program that sends teams of young adults around the country doing community service work for nonprofits and state and federal organizations. We work for a variety of service projects, do a lot of different diverse work, and we're really excited to be here, working for SELF.
Just like Angelique said, we've covered a lot of service areas this year. Our team specifically has been throughout the Midwest. We originally went to Wisconsin to help restore a prairie ecosystem and teach field trips to kids about invasive species and the signs of spring. And then we moved on to, back to Iowa to help with Cedar Valley Habitat for Humanity. We actually got a chance to help with their home builder splits, which included building three houses in five days, which was crazy, and it was a great experience for all of us. It also helped us to develop some basic construction skills before coming here. But right before we came here, we ventured off to Detroit, Michigan to help with the Golden Age Games, which is an Olympic-style event for veterans or armed forces members that are over 55. We helped set up that event, facilitate some of the activities and some of the sports, and then we helped tear down that event as well. And then we're back here with SELF helping with their home repair system, home repair program, like John and Angelique said. And we don't know where we're going for round four, which is super exciting, so.
So in this packet or in this slideshow, I've included pictures of before and afters of the homes that we've worked on. We've worked on about 12 homes, 12, 13 homes so far. And this, this is the first home that we actually worked on. We were working with a youth group and we built a wheelchair ramp that took us about two days. And then on the second day, we actually dug some post holes and built some handrails and painted them for an elderly homeowner who actually injured himself walking up those steps before those handrails were put in. So, yeah, that's about it.
Yeah, so I said, well, this gentleman named Chris, he was a homeowner. We did some work in his house. You can see there's some light landscape, assistive repair effects, but it could be all that. Assistant fixing that shed, you can see in the photo on the top left, and finished the luscious painting inside the home as well. We actually ran a new wall line to Chris's house before they got here, and so they had this big trench that they had to fill.
Alright, so this house, this was owned by a man named Rick. This was actually in Middletown itself. He had, I believe, cerebral palsy. He has a lot of hard, he has a hard time with getting around and doing work for himself. So what we did was we touched up paint along his siding there and above on the ceiling. And then we also painted both his front and back porch for him, scraped it, made a real look for the lines.
I can speak quickly about this. We were just putting in concrete stones to create a pathway, walkway for her.
And we had put a ramp in for her originally. This connected the back patio with the front of the house. She's in a wheelchair, so now she can go.
This is actually a wheelchair ramp that we painted. One of the work camps actually worked on it during that event.
And they finished it up and painted it.
So this is a wheelchair, wheelchair ramp that we actually fixed up a little bit and then painted it, and then getting here is just going up the outside.
Yeah, they fixed it up. The lady put her foot through it.
Oh goodness.
You can see on the one picture all the algae involved on the house. I see the frame. That's a two months.
This, this house was a little bit of a doozy. A work camp spent their entire week scraping it and prepping it for painting, and our team got to come in, finish up painting it within a day. This house as well. We also, we scraped this entire house, it's a two-story home, and then we also painted it. You can see the difference, especially on the top right-hand photograph of when it's peeling and violating code. So the bottom half where it's fixed up, you can see a little bit of color change happening on the bottom of that.
And that's it. And then tomorrow they start to board the ramp and make it cook.
Great. Well, thank you for coming down and sharing the stories. Very well done. Appreciate your time here in Middletown and all the help you've provided. Hope you have a safe journey on the rest of your, rest of your trip, so, thank you. Well done. Thanks to SELF too, John. Don't want to forget about that. Well done.
Second, Your Honor, talking to Mr. Landon today, and we are working on the right-of-way acquisitions for the Yankee Road project that we discovered for construction next spring in 2017. He asked me to relay to council that as of now, there's a number, quite a large number of parcels involved in that project. There are over 30 right now that have not voluntarily signed off on the right-of-way acquisition piece of that. The first step in that would be, if you remember, we did this for a couple of other projects, there's two or three pieces where you suggest that we, you give us permission to go after right-of-way and then you authorize us to file suit, and there's a series of steps that go along with that process. We will be starting that process theoretically as early as September 6th. So they are still working, and that number may go way down between now and September 6th, but you could theoretically see 30 different pieces of legislation asking you to allow us to start the right-of-way acquisition for those. Again, we'll see as time goes along how many of those are left by the time we get to September 6th, but there, that could be a, a large, long meeting. Third thing, Your Honor, is while I was out last week, we were awarded a safer grant for the fire department. If you haven't seen that or heard that news, $1.8 million will allow us to bring on 12 new EMT firefighters over the next couple of months. We have already posted that job and have, have over 100 applications already turned in for that, those positions. We hope to bring half of them to you in September and the other half to you in October. What that does is allow us to go back to 16 a day for our firefighters, which effectively means we have another firefighting company onboard every day moving forward after that goes forward. As we've talked to council before, one of the nice things about this is working with the union, we've been able to work out how we can bring on additional EMTs in a lower pay range that allows us to, as the first grant goes, we hope to go to eight in two years, four in four years, and then not need any in six years, without blowing up the budget, without increasing our budgetary costs. So great for now. We have a plan to keep it going into the future and be able to pay for it under the current budget scenario, and so it's all good moving across the board. We will be bringing those to you as we get them ready to go. Finally, late this afternoon, we received a letter from the Dave Yost Auditor of State that the city of Middletown has been awarded the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. This is a award presented to local governments upon completion of a financial audit, audit, excuse me, entries that, entities, if I could read, that receive the award meet the following criteria of a clean audit report. They must file timely financial reports with the auditor of state's office, which we've done. That there were no findings for recovery citations, material weaknesses, or deficiencies. The entity's management letter has no comments relating to ethics, questionable costs, lack of timely reports, reconciliation, or public meetings or public records. And there were no other financial concerns that involved eligible, involved the eligible entity. I'm having trouble speaking tonight, I apologize. But we will, they have asked to come to a future council meeting, so as we get that scheduled, we'll actually make a formal presentation, but again, a, a clean audit from the state of Ohio with no findings, and we will have an award coming on behalf of that in the future. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Atkins?
I just had a quick question for Mr. Atkins. On the right-of-way, are those 30, is that because people are not responding or because they're not looking to work in, in that manner?
Generally, it's both. It's a combination of, yeah, people on vacation, people who just set it to the side and haven't done it, some people who say, I don't want to. It's, it's a combination of all those types of things.
Thank you.
All right, if council indulged me, I did receive a citizen's comment card late. It's just the one. This evening we'll try to accommodate that in the schedule. I'd like to invite Mr. Spanish down to the podium. So good evening. Could you get your name and address for the record, please?
John Sapanish, 1110 Lafayette Avenue, Middletown Hall. I think it's great. I hate to see these kids leave. I think it's great to see a young generation like that willing to work. I'm here tonight about the raise to our, our city manager, which I respect, and I think he's doing a good job. My problem is, Mr. Atkins, agreed to a five-year contract. Okay? And he's doing a terrific job. But I say, why are we amending a five-year contract? He agreed to it, why don't we wait till the five years are up? And then offer him the substantial raise that you are offering now. I'm on a fixed income. There are a lot of people that are off work. There's a lot of people on low pay. We can't afford tax raises. When we come up with stuff like the city water bill keeps going up and up and up and up. Our street lights, we're going to have to pay for possibly. I can keep on and keep on, I'm sure. The infrastructure in this town is, I hate to say, it's going down the river on a raft. You know it and I know it. I believe myself, the contract should not be amended until it is up. This money should go to the infrastructure, it should go to the police department, it should go to the fire. And I'd say, give the man what is due to him after the five years are up. This town needs more of a facelift. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your thoughts. All right, with that, we can move to our consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
For your consideration, this evening, we have approval of the city council minutes from July 5th, July 19th, and that should be August the 2nd. That's a typo on my part, 2016. To receive and file board and commission minutes from the park board of June 6th, 2016, the library board from April 19th, May 17th, and June 21st, 2016, to confirm the personnel appointments of Billy Snead and John Clark, maintenance workers for the Department of Public Works and Utilities, Amadeo Marchetti, firefighter, EMT, Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire, and to receive and file an oath of office for Mark Zimmerman.
Okay, do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions as listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
We have three motion items this evening?
To consent to the sale of a city-owned vacant lot at 129 Garfield Street to Whitney Martin for $500.
Okay, do we have motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? That, any information, Mr. Atkins, besides the staff report?
No, nothing beyond the staff report. This is another demolished home and a vacant lot that the city owns, so as, as normally the case, we would offer that lot for $500.
Very good. All right, hearing no question, comments. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Item B, to consent to the sale of a city-owned vacant lot at 514 Garfield Street to Christine Bertrand for $500.
Okay, do we have motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Last item on the motion agenda, to appoint two members to the Volunteer Peace Officers Dependent Fund Board for an initial term lasting until December 31st, 2016 pursuant to the Higher Advice Code 143.02.
Okay, do we have motion to adopt?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Atkins, any?
Yes, Your Honor, the Ohio Legislature recently enacted the Jason Gresko Act. This act creates a fund to provide death and disability benefits for volunteer peace officers and their eligible dependents. Since the city does have reserve officers that are volunteers, it's required to be a member of the fund and is required to establish a five-person board. The board's duties will be to review claims. The city is also required to submit a premium of $500. We will pay that probably out of the police fund. We are not asking for additional funds at this time. The initial election is to be conducted by council. After the initial election, city council will be responsible for selecting two board members each year. The board shall consist of two members selected by council, two selected by the volunteer police officers, one board member selected by the other four members. The volunteer police officers recently met and elected Tony Peck and Will Rogers. City council is ready to elect two people to the board. Staff is recommending the appointment of Chief Rodney Mutersball and Lieutenant Scott Reeve as the council appointments for this purpose. Again, the $500 will be paid out of the police budget. We're not asking for additional funds.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I have a question. What is the premium for? Is that a startup cost for the board?
Yes, ma'am. That's my understanding.
All right, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Can I, can I raise some council comments? Start this evening with Mr. Moon.
Yeah, just a few items tonight, mayor. As I'm sure we all will, I want to extend my congratulations to Kayla Harrison on her second consecutive gold medal. Looking forward to the parade coming up in the coming months. I also just wanted to thank city staff for the work on Verity Parkway and getting that ready. I'm glad to see that paving's moving forward. And then finally, I just wanted to announce on August 18th, the Chamber has their annual expo. And just as importantly, probably more importantly, Atrium's mobile mammogram van is going to be there, so if you're interested, please make an appointment and pop over there for your free mammogram. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Bohannon? Mr. Picard?
Mr. Mayor, no comments.
Ms. Bronston?
Thank you, mayor. Want to give condolences out to our House Commissioner, Jackie Phillips, and her sister Verlina Stewart. They lost their mom, and she had been ill and in the same nursing home with my dad, so just wanted to extend condolences out to her. We had a number of family funerals to attend in these last few weeks ourselves. The Bradley family grew up here in Middletown and moved to Atlanta. And of course, we have a lot of Thomases that worked with Hall Jordan, and there was a loss in their family, so I want to give a nice recognition for sympathy to them. Wanted to say I attended a leadership summit, a global leadership summit for the Warren Correctional Facility last week. And the men are really looking forward to some other leadership classes, if there are anything, any person or any program or activity that we could extend to them. It helps them with reentry, and I know Mr. Atkins worked on that, and so if there's anything we can do to help with the transition when they do come to that point, it would be a great idea to start on that ahead of time. Went to the ribbon cutting, cutting for my salon, and I won one of their baskets. That was a lot of fun. And we have another one upcoming next week with the Gathering Church. And so those things are going on, and just welcome anybody to come to our meetings. It's an open forum here in council, and we'd love to see more people here. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. I just have a couple of things to mention. Just would like to put out a reminder that we're back in school, which is hard to believe here in mid-August, but I know Middletown City started last week, and Mr. Atkins and I had the privilege of presenting their convocation and talking about it, and Doug brought me back to my early days in school. He mentioned he was, as Atkins, he was always first row, first seat. So fond memories of school, but great to see such an engaged district. They've got a number of new teachers and faculty members there. So it was good to participate in that and, and share, and as I mentioned, you know, our, our futures are intertwined with one another, so they've got a lot of excitement going on, but certainly glad to see what's going forward there. Just to put out a reminder that folks should be on the lookout for buses. I was behind a couple this morning, and kids trying to get their bus routes set, so make sure we're careful before and after school. We do have a couple holidays coming up with Labor Day, something to look forward to, certainly something to celebrate and remember. And now that we have First Friday, too, be happening that weekend, so a lot of fun things downtown. As well as, I think, this next weekend is their craft beer walk to follow off the women's wine and chocolate. This is not gender-specific, I don't think. I think anyone who likes craft beer is welcome, but I know DMI is supporting that as a fundraiser, doing that as a fundraiser. And certainly a great, great way to complement our outdoor refreshment area, as well as some of the great events happening downtown. And then last, I just mentioned, a little more serious note for council. I'll be attending a mayor's coalition meeting of the 30 largest cities' mayors this Friday in Columbus. This will be our second meeting. We met earlier in the spring, kind of as an organizational meeting. Don't have a full agenda yet, but we are working on a couple key topics to just raise awareness of the plights that cities are dealing with. Obviously, there's the larger cities, the Cleveland's, Columbus, Cincinnati's, to some of the smaller cities like Lima. Middletown's probably in the middle. But some of the things, just to raise awareness with the state legislature, so we're going to be moving forward with that. So if there's some worthwhile information to share, I'll be sure to pass it along to council and keep you updated in terms of what we're covering there. And with that, we can move on to our legislation this evening. Ms. Breton?
Thank you. There are eight items of legislation on tonight's agenda. Of those, two are emergency items. We will need a motion to waive the charter provision requiring two separate readings as to the following ordinance and resolution. Ordinance number O2016-29 and resolution number R2016-15.
I make a motion to waive the charter that requires a reading on two separate days for ordinance number O2016-29 and for ordinance number O 2016-29 and resolution number R 2016-15 and call them emergency measures to be read one time only.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, let's call the roll, please.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ordinance number O 2016-28 and ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Butler County Transportation Improvement District. This is a second reading and is ready for action this evening.
Okay. Do we have motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? And we had a presentation on this before. Okay. Ms. Gank, let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ordinance number O 2016-29 and ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an amendment to the contract with Polydine Inc. for the purchase of polymer for use at the wastewater treatment plant for the year 2016 and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Atkins, any updates from the staff report?
Just one, Your Honor. This is one that's our fault. The polymer in this, that is in question for tonight is used in two separate phases of the wastewater treatment process, in the centrifuge and the gravity belt systems. We did not request enough for both. We did not use, we had only requested for the centrifuge and we did not do the gravity belt. And unfortunately, we didn't catch the mistake in time to make this an emergency and we're going to run out. And so it's, it's our fault, but we do need it and I apologize for bringing this as an emergency, but we do, are requesting some help.
That's all right. We do need that polymer, so.
We do.
With that, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Resolution number R 2016-15, a resolution that the city of Middletown will pick up the statutorily required employee contribution to the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System with the city manager of the city of Middletown pursuant to IRC Section 414 H2 and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay. Mr. Atkins? I mean, I know we talked about this in executive session as part of your contract amendments.
Correct, Your Honor.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to publicly say that, or maybe Mr. Atkins can tell us about the timeframe that we're looking at. We had mentioned putting both of those items on the same date for, for the purpose of voting, so this is not gonna be September 6th like the other agreement.
That's correct, Your Honor. When Mr. Landon, or when Mr. Landon looked at this up and created this, he looked at the PERS rules and the Higher Revised Code. You cannot backdate, the other pair of parts of my contract, we talked about backdating to my anniversary date. Under PERS rules, you cannot do that, so it will only be effective after the resolution is passed. And if we wait obviously more time, it'll take more time to cover that, so I am requesting that you do that if you don't want to, because the majority rules.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Resolution number R 2016-16, a resolution in support of the development of state and U.S. bicycle routes as designated by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, AASHTO, and the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, and declaring an emergency. No action is requested on this until September 6th, 2016.
Okay. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, ODOT has developed a network of state and U.S. bicycle routes to connect different facilities. ODOT is proposing to designate the Great Miami River Trail through Middletown as part of U.S. Bike Route Number 25. Included with the designation would be installation of signs. ODOT will fund the initial installation of the signs. City would be responsible for ongoing maintenance. We are asking that we support this with this resolution. It's consistent with the city master plan, the downtown plan under development, what we want to do with the bicycle plan connecting Franklin Connector, future funding opportunities. This would help us get additional grants. And ODOT has requested to have all local jurisdictions' resolutions in their hands by September 30th, which means we'll need to pass this as a resolution, as an emergency.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? Okay. Thank you.
Resolution number R 2016-17, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. No action is requested on this until September 6th, 2016.
Your Honor, actually, we do this every year and this is the second or third piece of this process where we prepare the annual tax budget, send it down to the commission. They say it's good, they send it back, we adopt it, and then we turn right back around to send it back to them. They have now, commission's now completed its review. This resolution accepts the rates and we will then turn around and send it back to the county.
Okay. Very good. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right. Ms. Bronston?
Resolution number R 2016-18, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the employment agreement with Douglas Atkins to serve as city manager of the city of Middletown and declaring an emergency. No action is requested on this until September 6th, 2016.
Okay. This is our legislation dealing with Mr. Atkins, a contract amendment. And just to clarify some of the comments that were made earlier and some of the discussions or questions we've had, Mr. Atkins was under a, really just a two-year contract, had contemplated his initial salary and then a bump after the, after the first year, which, which he's completed, so we're beyond that two-year. So this really just lays out the path, as we've discussed in executive session. You know, I think there's a lot of, you know, merits and great progress we've made. If we need further discussion, we could certainly convene another executive session to, you know, review this, but I think we've had agreement in executive session that Mr. Atkins is deserving this and it's been well-earned and well-deserved, so. With that, we can go on to our next piece. Ms. Breton?
Ordinance number O 2016-30 and ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing the purchase of additional police canines and declaring an emergency. No action is requested on this until September 6th, 2016.
Your Honors, you're aware we've been working on the heroin summits and we've been trying to attack the heroin problem on multiple fronts. The heroin summit is the social side, we've got our heroin response team out. We are working on the chronic nuisance ordinance and enforcement of that now to look on the locations where drug activity is taking place. Police Division are not only using the community-oriented policing to hit hotspots, but we are also working to get drugs as they enter the city with directed patrols. One of the most valuable tools we have in this is using canines when we stop suspicious vehicles. It gives us a chance to walk around the vehicle with a, with a canine looking for drug activity coming into the city and out of the city. We are up to four canines now. We are still having times that we are not able to canvas vehicles that we would like to, that we think we might see, we might have drugs, but we don't see them visibly. We are asking for the chance to purchase a fifth canine to continue our fight on the heroin. Our plan all along has been, as that heroin epidemic subsides, at some point it simply must. We will let those dogs retire over time and get back eventually to two or three that we feel that we need on an ongoing basis, but we feel we could use the fifth dog.